Everybody else.
Um, is TVCTV joining this meeting?
I don't think so. I think they were gonna try to join our December meeting. It's just for reference in case anyone needs it. How many did you pronounce? Six. I'll take one. On a hard copy. Sure, you looked at it to death. You're like, no, it's not important. Yeah, this is like the updated version. I think I might have just emailed it out. Jan, do you wanna take the chair position today?
Oh.
And Annie's not here. Yeah, she is gonna be able to make next week.
Order?
Yeah.
The meeting called to order at nine thirty for, um, Planning Commission work session.
Jan, can I ask you?
Today, in the audience, we have Commissioner Boehner online.
Yeah.
Commissioner Tiso here as well. Absent is Commissioner Bellows. Jan, did we get a transmission from... Well, there's Commissioner Bellows right there.
Hi, I'm Carol.
Carol Mattes.
Hi.
Nice to meet you too.
Hi, Gretchen.
Hi. I'm recovering well.
Other one if you can. There you go. Welcome, members of the audience. Uh, this is a work session for the Planning Commission to review the annexation request as well as the Lakeland wetlands. Maps being proposed by CD and New Home, Civic Community Design and New Home Incorporated. Application is in the packet. Packet is about a thousand pages long. I'm sure it makes for some wonderful reading. But, uh, our purpose here... Yeah. Our purpose here is to familiarize ourselves with the findings and the narratives of the wetland inventory as well as the annexation. Uh, if you are a member of the audience, uh, this is a work session for the council, and so there will not be, um, public comments other than with our specialists. Online, we have, uh, Merth Walker, who is our wetland specialist. Uh, we have Commissioner Boehner online, Mr. Mitchell. I see you're in the audience as well. Um, in our audience here, we have Maureen from Pacific Community Design, who is our annexation and land use specialist. We have our own staff, uh, Max Carter, who's our new planner, uh, myself, and Keith Lyden, who is our senior contract planner. He's been with us for some time. This is why I'm teaching us all the old tricks. And walking us through our agenda today, which is merely to go over the narrative and findings that you have within your packet so that you're prepared for next week. So I'll hand it off to Mr. Lyden.
Right, well, um, yeah, as you probably noticed, we have two different applications, technically speaking, that are being considered together. The one is the proposal for annexation, which is W twenty-three dash oh eight. That also includes zoning of the property from Washington County zoning to easy zoning. And this paper map that you folks have show what it looks like. So as you might recall, with the, with the Town Center, excuse me, with the King's Master Plan and with the code amendments that we adopted for the zoning structure for this area, we have four different zones. The Town Center Zone, which is for that western north portion, which shows up here in, in a red color. Then we have a deep end neighborhood zone, which is, as the title implies, is a long deep end road, kind of on the north edge. And you can see a couple of properties are being, are proposed to be included, and those are shown in the orange color, which would be the... Uh, we also have Central Neighborhood, which is east of Elsner and generally along the river for some distance. Uh, and that is, uh, one property that's partially gonna be that zone. One thing that you might recall with the way the planning was going to work with this is that the, the boundary between the, um, Bend Neighborhood and the Central Neighborhood is going to be that's collector's street. So this is showing the anticipated alignment for that street and where the, where the zoning would be, but the zoning line will ultimately be that once the street alignment is, when the engineering is done and the exact alignment is. These are pretty good approximations of where that boundary is going to be, but... Uh, we have a third, uh, excuse me, a fourth, um, designation for this area, and that's the rural character neighborhoods, but those are the ones that include the city. And obviously, that's not part of the annexation. Yes, closest to the city. And obviously, that's not part of this annexation proposal. I suppose you all understand that the, the way we're getting the action is by annexing the southern half of the Beef Bend Road right away from the existing...
Yeah, now, what, what, um, what sort of, what that means, but what, what can we do with that? Can we decide, can we like both half of Beef Bend Roads or...
No, so what, what happens here, this is always a little bit confusing, is, um, just because you annex a road or an area doesn't mean you've taken jurisdiction of that road.
Oh, okay.
So, um, Washington County is still gonna retain jurisdiction of Beef Bend as far as what goes on there, how things are constructed, all that stuff. That's still Washington County's responsibility. That doesn't change.
Is that the road itself?
So it's similar really to, to Fisher, Fisher Road between one hundred and thirty-first and ninety-nine. That is also a Washington County road, even though the, the street is annexed in Kansas.
So it doesn't give us any power over Washington County?
We have to negotiate that.
Yeah.
So one of the things that we'll have to do is consult and work with Washington County on the design of Beef Bend.
Right.
Right.
Our goal is, of course, to have connectivity.
Yeah.
And Washington County's goal, of course, is to preserve the functionality of the road, right? And it, it also behooves us to preserve that functionality to a certain extent, right? Because if we can keep Beef Bend flowing smoothly, then more people will stay on Beef Bend instead of diverting to, to and through our other neighborhoods.
Right.
So I think, I think maybe the simple way to explain it is we're hoping that the county is willing to move away from a highway design, rural highway design, and recognize that this place is changing and is gonna be urbanized and should be more of a urban street, but they, they behave differently and, you know, so...
I was thinking about Cornell Road.
Yeah.
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 And going through, um, but they had to negotiate, um, new neighborhood. They got Washington County to bend. And, um, West Cornell Road is like...
Yeah, yeah. So then also with this annexation, um, you're proposing to annex, uh, Elsner Road. And, you know, for Elsner Road, Washington County has indicated it is willing to transfer jurisdiction to the city. Um, they're, they're interested in, in the main...
Right, yeah.
Streets, arterial roads in their, in their system. And then for Roy Rogers Road also, we would be annexing out Tigerway.
Oh, wow.
The reason for that is, um, uh, so we're going to the middle in Beef Bend Road because Tiger's on the other side, so they eventually will annex the remainder. So it'll be Center Line is Tiger, South Center Line is King City. Uh, since, uh, the area beyond Roy Rogers Road is in rural reserves, theoretically, it's not getting annexed anytime after we're all gone, but, uh, it's not for a long time. So there, the preference was we just went and annexed the city.
Excuse me?
But again...
Um, the land, the land that is directly across Roy Rogers is, was, listed as undesignated, and the city have, Tigerd has bought that property for a future park.
Up there they have, yeah, right. Yeah, so that's northeast of our area, or northwest, sorry.
Yeah, but it's designated as undesignated. That was the compromise that was made when they did the, um, agreement back in oh-nine.
I believe those stuff across from us, though, is still rural reserve.
There's a teeny piece that's still rural reserve, but the vast majority of it is undesignated.
Okay, well, in any event, all agreeable to be annexing the entire right of way.
Yeah.
Jan, it probably doesn't really make much difference to the city because it'll still, that one for sure will remain a Washington County...
Um, just while we're asking questions real quickly, um, the, the big house property, there any chance that we could annex that or would annex that? I know...
The little square there, the five acres?
Yeah, uh-huh.
Um, right now, we don't have the data, 'cause we would have to have, uh, the wetland, um, inventory done prior to, um, but we could potentially annex that at a later date.
All right.
Right now, it is surrounded on three sides, four sides, if we include Beef Bend to the north, so...
Yeah.
Um, there's a potential that, uh, that gets annexed in the near future, but right now with the way that our code is set up, it's, we have to go through, uh, wetland inventory of the land that we want to annex prior to annexing them and giving them a city designation.
Okay.
So at this point in time, that property does not have a wetland delineation on it, and so it would probably take, you know, nine months or so to get a concurrence on that property. So we can't bring it in and give it a city designation to this. There's specific reason why this is like... It's just the original farmhouse for that property, and the resident is still living there, and they don't wanna develop the property. So there's no development potential. There's no trigger for a...
Yeah.
Wetland delineation.
So it's a property owner.
Right, yeah. So, but the surrounding, you know, forty acres or so comes in, um, yeah, it just is unfortunate that we have these little holes, but I think as we work toward a complete local wetland inventory of the entirety, then it'll be a lot easier to annex these because we already have that piece. The same would go for the West Side Trail and one hundred and thirty-seventh. Like, we just don't have the wetlands when it's finished yet. Uh, one of the things that city is undertaking right now as part of the Metro Trails Grant that we received is a survey of that area, including a survey of wetlands for that, uh, West Side Trail segment. And so once we have that done, we can then adopt or get those pieces as part of a, um, potential annexation and bring in that. Right now, I think our border is like the center of that, uh, that easement area. We have the PGE lines, but not the Bonneville lines.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
And it's just...
Yeah.
That's not a blocking area.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
We'd like to see about doing some...
But it'll be kinda fun. I think we have some public engagement coming up on that, and we'll try to work out what kinda parks and activities we wanna program into that corridor. But I could easily see us adding like community garden opportunities and dog parks and, um, you know, ice courts, soccer courts, or soccer fields, something to that effect in that area. Yeah, potential river access for kayaks and things of that nature. A lot of opportunity in that corridor, but we'll work on that another day.
Yeah, the PGE, PGE and BPA will have some requirements as to what they're... Anyways, typically, for example, ground equipment or other things like medical electricity, they can...
No, no metals.
Yeah, you don't want any of that. Uh, so, yeah, there are some things that they won't want to allow, but, uh... So the other, besides the annexation and the zone change, the other piece is... Or the portion of theme. A lot of the paperwork that you had in there, and I see the first page. Do we have a map that shows the, the local wetland area where those are in here?
I don't know. It's in the packet.
It should be in the packet, but we might see it.
I was looking at it yesterday.
Not Exhibit L, is it? 'Cause I pulled that up. It's a little hard for me to read.
First time I saw a map like that. I don't...
Are you surveying?
Yeah, it's a survey and you survey depth and...
That's a question for Merth.
Yeah.
Merth, you wanna pop in and explain how you guys go about surveying all these wonderful wetlands? Can you unmute her? Over there, Mass? I think you might have to go and allow her to unmute. Figure it out. Yeah, on Merth, I'll work on it.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Were you just looking for a map of what wetlands were determined to be locally significant?
Yeah, we're wondering what page is on in the packet.
Yeah, I think it's in the, the second attachment on page three thirty, three thirty-six. It's Exhibit A that PCD, uh, prepared. And there's just four wetlands, um, that were determined to be locally significant wetlands. So we've done the delineations for all of the properties within the proposed annexation area except for the Roy Rogers Road right of way, which was done for the water pipeline in twenty-seventeen. So we have like five separate reports, um, as we were able to get permission to access from property owners and went out and did delineations, and all of them have been submitted to the Oregon Departments of State Lands, and they have approved all of them. The, uh, if you have specific questions about how we go about determining what's wetland, I'm happy to go there, but hopefully you guys have some familiarity, you all have some familiarity with hydrology and the vegetation and the soils that drive the determination. The local wetland inventory report, which I had called the Oregon Freshwater Wetland Assessment Method Report, because it wasn't really a full-blown local wetlands inventory, but it's something that DSL and DLCD worked with us to modify the approach, since we had done delineations, and it's a lot easier, um, to get it approved. So we submitted the draft, um, report to DSL in September. That's what you have in your packets in both of them, I believe. And we just got comments back, um, last week from DSL, and we are currently working on revising that. So there was no substantive change, um, other than they took jurisdiction over the small, uh, Wetland A on the Charlin Farms site, which was zero point zero six acre. The person who had written that report at SDBCA, 'cause I had semi-retired, um, had thought that Wetland was not gonna be jurisdictional, 'cause they thought it was from a failed drain tile, but apparently, um, it is a spring that was tiled, so, um, I will have to run the assessment method on it to determine that it's not locally significant. I'm very confident that it won't be, so there won't be any substantive change, um, to our wetlands map. And, uh, it's the very small wetland just south of the Out Parcel, south of Beef Bend and east of Elsner that's, um, called, uh, SFA right there. Yeah, you got it. So that's the only one that, um, I didn't run the assessment method on, 'cause I didn't think it was jurisdictional, but I have to do that now. So there will be changes, but nothing earth-shakingly different, so I'm very happy with that. And, um, we've been talking with reviewers at DSL. We still don't have assurance that they'll be able to approve it next week, but that's my goal, is that we'll get our edits done, the GIS gods and the AutoCAD gods willing, uh, be able to push on DSL to approve it next week, because you really can't adopt it until it's approved, um, by the DSL. So that's gonna, you know, potentially affect your agenda for next week on the sixth. Any specific questions for me?
Um, just real quick, what is the, um, public...
Oh, um, Jan, you had a...
That number didn't work?
No, wait, um, I'm connected.
There's a little flyer for the...
Merth, while they're trying to get looked on to the internet, could you just give a quick explanation for the planning commissioners on what the difference is between wetland determination and wetland delineation and W?
Certainly, determination is just a really broad brush stroke level analysis saying that, yes, you have wetlands on this property and they're approximately here, but the, there, it's not anything that could be confirmed by an agency. You know, wetland delineation is actually where you're delineating a line on the ground around that boundary. It's very precise. We have paired sample plots showing the wetland conditions and the upland conditions, and, uh, it's generally surveyed either with GIS or with professional land surveys, what Pacific Community Design did here. Um, and then that delineation can be submitted to Oregon Department of State Lands for, for approval, review and for approval. So determination level is just, you know, very preliminary progression. The delineation is full-blown.
Um, I have a question. I know it doesn't apply specifically to this area, the Elsner, our town center area, but as we move farther east, as development happened up on the south side of, of Bull Mountain, um, the storm drain retention, uh, facilities were insufficient and created a lot of flooding coming down into Rivermead and the areas, um, I can never remember the name of that little lane that's west, oh, hundred and forty-second-ish area, if there were a number. Uh, and it's, as I said, it's created a lot more flooding. In fact, where I lived, it created more flooding off of one thirty-first when I lived down there. Um, and my question is, is does that have any impact on your wetland delineation? And I'm talking about further east.
Well, I'll, I'll answer that, Gretchen, if you don't mind.
Okay.
And Merth, you can, you can chime in as well. Um, the city is adopting a stormwater management, basically what you're talking about is stormwater management, and the city is adopting a process for stormwater management that's considered continuous flow. It's the same as what Tigerd has used up on River Terrace, and we're talking about using the same system down here. So the system that Clean Water Services uses is, uh, like capacity. Am I, am I correct? It's like a capa, max capacity versus, uh, continuous flow. And so it's a little bit of a different engineering calculation that goes into that, but the idea is that you have, you build your facilities to manage what the flow is, right? What the maximum flow is going to be or what the maximum capacity of the stream is going to be is what, uh, Clean Water Services currently uses. One of the elements that Clean Water Service doesn't regulate is the, um, aesthetics of it, and that's something that we have to do internally that has been built into our, uh, master plan and regulating plan. And we still have to do a little bit of work on that so that we have a stormwater, um, guide, if you will, and we are gonna try to pass that by resolution here in the next month or two. But those will kind of just, uh, mirror what we see up in Tiger River, River Terrace, and it's kind of like where we point stormwater to.
Okay.
In essence, they kind of, while Bull Mountain wasn't built to the same standard, we're building ours to a higher standard, essentially.
Okay, so this will address the issue of additional water that's coming down the hill in the eastern part of our annexed area, mostly west-east of one fiftieth.
Theoretically, uh, Tigerd is addressing their additional runoff with their new flow standards, but yes, we'll be, uh, we'll be trying to do similar, take similar measures for our area as well. And we've talked to Clean Water Services about their plans for stormwater, and we feel that there's a golden opportunity for some regional stormwater options to handle the, the King City retention that's necessary for our development. And, uh, as you'll see in the map that's up here right now, one of those opportunities is, uh, this green area down at the bottom, down here, and in this area here. So we have an opportunity here for some extra retention, and then we just need to build in the aesthetics to kind of add it and create like, kind of like a summer lake park fe, feature, you know? Um, there are some other opportunities that Clean Water Services has identified in their stormwater master planning component that identify other areas, including the, the current King City Community Park, which can handle all the stormwater drainage from the eastern portion of the development area. And then we would need something in the middle, somewhere along or near one hundred and fiftieth to, uh, Myrtle down that area to collect all the, the stormwater from that region as well. So if you divided this area into three primary, uh, drainage basins, the area that you see on the map is primarily going to be consolidated in this general area, and then you would have the area that's next that would be consolidated down between, somewhere between one fiftieth and, uh, Myrtle, and then you would have everything that, uh, east of Myrtle would be consolidated down near the King City Community Park.
Yeah, my concern is that middle area, because of course, none of that south Cooper Mountain development is in the city of Tigerd. It's all unincorporated, so... Thank you. Sorry, Ms. Walker.
No worries.
Did you have anything else to add to that?
Well, just that we deal with hydrologic conditions as they are today. And increased runoff from up slope generally, um, erodes stream channels and deepens them and, um...
Yeah.
from up slope generally erodes stream channels and deepens them and kind of disconnects the wetland floodplain from the stream. And so, there are a lot of opportunities to reverse that degradation, but it doesn't really affect our delineation of wetlands per se. If you have the last lowest line remnant parcel and everyone's dumping their stormwater on it, then yeah, your wetlands are going to get bigger. But I don't think that's the case on most of these properties.
Is Clean Water using the assumption that Tigard's going to be, will Tigard collect their own stormwater or will that be rolling onto our town center, their River Terrace expansion?
Theoretically, they're under the assumption that Tigard will manage their own stormwater in accordance with their continuous flow standards. And so, they're supposed to be building their own retention facility.
Okay. So, in Clean Water, is the agency that coordinates that?
I think Clean Water is the agency that manages that and ensures that the standards are being met to their standard. But if anything over and above has to be done internally. So, that's one of the things that King City, since we're going over and above what the Clean Water standard is, we're going to have to manage the over and above aspects.
Oh, okay.
That's your aesthetics. That's the continuous flow. So, just the modeling for those sort of things. Over and above what's the minimum requirement, but that's something that will happen. Other questions?
I just have a couple more comments on what we have. So, the approval of the local wetlands inventory is the other application. Even though the number sequences, 09 and the other is 08, we'll actually need to opt them in reverse. So, we'll actually have, or at least the city council will be considering the wetland piece first. Technically speaking, that is a wetland inventory needs to be adopted and approved first before you can annex property. Not the other way around. We're tapping on the same A, the same deal. So, we'll be doing it that way. And then, as part of the other application, we do have two amendments that we're already making to the Paris chapter in the code, 16 dot 114. You might recall that for the wetlands part of it, the safe harbor section, we had a map that was just a placeholder.
Oh, right. Yeah.
And so, we are going to have then the wetland, the local wetland inventory map, kind of the summary map showing where those are. And did that make it into the packet anywhere? Or is that something that-
That's what I'm looking for.
It wasn't in the packet.
Yeah.
Like where that map's going to look like? That's what I was looking for.
Anyway, we do have, we do have-
Look at that placeholder.
We do have that map and that map will go into and replace the placeholder.
Yeah, I'm looking for the map on-
I'm looking for the line that- Yeah. No, this is the-
I can share the screen. Stacy just emailed it.
I can't see that far.
Stacy just emailed it to you.
So, are we addressing the erosion that, the big complaint of erosion that we have been getting because Clean Water Services didn't anticipate changes in our climate
So, you're talking about the areas that we have currently, the problem areas that we have currently for erosion?
Yeah.
It's a challenge. One of the things that we're working on in our, that our master plan and our code calls for is kind of opportunities to get in and try to heal some of the erosion. But that comes with the ability to do development, right? Like, we can't really get in there if we don't have a development option near or nearby that will help us, right? I messed it up. Here we are.
Okay.
Yeah. Can you turn that for us?
It's designed to go vertically like the map that's in the-
Is there a way I can navigate to that?
So, the map that's on the screen is the one that's going to replace the placeholder map in the code. But it's the one for the safe harbor wetland. Had a placeholder map in the map. And then there's one small text amendment that we're suggesting. And that is essentially to not require a wetland delineation for somebody who only has a buffer area on their property and not the wetland itself. Because a delineation is, as Ruth explained, you're onsite, walking along the edge, taking samples. You have to have access to the property. And so, if a person just is in the buffer area and delineation is maybe to more exactly determine the boundary area, but they can't get access to the property, then they're sort of in this-
So, how does a person-
So, then we would just use the determination, which is a more general identification, call that good for it.
So, is the buffer area, are the buffer areas at all mapped?
We have the natural-
Yes, they are. They're shown there. So, you can see the little dotted lines around? For the wetland?
Right.
Talking of dotted lines?
Yeah, very fine dashed lines. You can see those little blue things. There's a couple of little blue things over to the, kind of in the middle of the map. And then there's a long one closer to the 12th River. Can you zoom in a little bit, Ron?
Oh, the dotted lines are the buffer areas.
The very fine, you know, from this distance, it almost looks like a solid line. Fine.
Yeah, that's good, right there, Ron.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So, that'd be the buffers.
Okay.
There you go. Perfect.
So, but those aren't the wetlands. Those are like aquatic, that's water, water, isn't it?
No, those are the wetlands.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And the green is?
Areas left out of the urban growth boundary or left out of the sealand, sorry. With their areas inside the urban growth boundary, outside sealand.
Okay. Okay. See. Oh, I see. Okay.
That's the map that's going to go in. Does there figure, oh, 16 dot 114 dash 10 to replace the placeholder map?
That's very helpful to see this map.
Yeah. Yeah. After slogging through all the stuff in the packet, this is really the punchline right here. This is, we need to know as far as regulated.
So, when we address this in the public hearing, this is the map that we will have for purposes of discussion?
Yeah. And this would be the map that actually is part of that code, that small code amendment that I was talking about.
Okay.
So, right now, Figure 10 is a placeholder map.
Okay.
And then there was, like I said, there's one small text change also in that section to clarify what happens if somebody only has the buffer on their property but not the wetland itself.
Could somebody get me a hard copy of this? Guys?
Yeah. I could bring you down some hard copies later today.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for unmuting me. I shouldn't have muted myself again, but I didn't know how that works. I have a clarifying question about the buffer shown here. It's 100 feet. And Keith, is that just for planning purposes? Because that's, excuse me, that's not going to be the buffer that Clean Water Services will be applying to these wetlands. It's larger than what we'll be applying.
Yes, for planning purposes. It's just, once you get into that area, we need to be a little more careful about what we're doing and make sure we know where the wetland is and all that sort of thing.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Mert, what is Clean Water's requirement?
It depends on the percent slope adjacent to the wetland boundary line. So, if you're less than 20, 25% slope, which is like 1 in 4, rise over run, then for most wetlands, it'll be 50 feet. If they're small, isolated, less than, is it a half acre? Then the buffer goes down to 25 feet. It can even go smaller if it has a really small drainage basin, but that won't be the case here. So, most of these wetlands are not in steep sloped areas. All of the ones along the tributaries can be. And then it gets a little bit more complicated. You go to the break-in slope where it goes to less than 25% and then add 15 feet. But generally, it's 50 feet for most of these. It can go up to 200 feet if it's really steep, but you won't see that here.
So, when somebody buys that property and they're buying the wetland, and we're calculating the density of the property and the wetland cannot be used, is the calculation of the density of the whole property or is it the property minus the wetland?
Thank you, Delise.
However, those may be held in like a tract. So, the most likely scenario is like-
I can't tell you.
Yeah. So, it's like in a tract, right? Like, that's the common, it's a common nature tract or something to that effect. And so, it's basically considered non-developable.
Right.
So, it doesn't go into like the total acreage of the developable land. And so, it's not subject to the density calculations.
Got it.
Because those are like natural areas. So, what ends up happening typically, what we see is those natural areas are either maintained by Clean Water Services, held as a tract that goes in the HOA of that subdivision. And then the HOA is responsible for maintenance or Clean Water Services is responsible for maintenance. But typically, it's just held in its natural state.
Okay. That's good. That's good to know. Because I worked on a project where they said, "We can be denser because we have wetlands we can't use in creation." Very-
I just go over, are there any criteria on the annexation piece that they need to be aware of? If there's any concerns or questions? Right now, what we have is the, an owner-triggered annexation, which requires signatures of at least 51% of, it's called a double majority annexation, right? And in this situation, we have an annexation that's putting, being put forth by 100% of the property owners. So, there really shouldn't be any holdup there. We also have all the signatures verified of all the owners and registered voters in that area. I don't think there's any shortfalls that we've seen anyways in the annexation request. The only thing, the holy enough stuff really is what Mert had mentioned earlier with the lake and wetland approval, essentially, which we're just kind of waiting for that last piece. Everything else seems to be in order. And we're just kind of waiting for that LWI on DSL.
When does LCDC make that, their determination? When is their meeting? You said next week.
This is, well, it's our meeting next week. We're waiting on concurrence from the Department of State Lands, right?
Oh.
On one, on the-
The little itty-bitty one.
Yes. So, we're waiting on the final concurrence from Department of State Lands to sign off on the creation of the local well and inventory map. And as soon as we have that, we'll have all the boxes checked.
Do we have any reason to think that we'd have that decision by next week?
We're working as hard as we can to get the requested edits back to DSL. The occurrence of the Thanksgiving holiday kind of messed up the response times. So, I'm working as hard as I can. I can't control my GIS people, but I'm hoping that we'll get our edits back in by Friday or Monday morning at the latest. And we'll implore DSL to turn it around as fast as they can. But there's no guarantee that we'll have it by Wednesday for certain. That would be a miracle that I'm hoping can happen, but I wouldn't-
So, we'd be in a situation of approving, approving the plan subject to that little tweak?
Well, there's more than just that tweak. There's a, you know, several pages of edits, but nothing is surmountable. Just some map changes, line work that we need to do, make sure all the acreages add up or equal the GIS and the paper map. So, it's a dance that we're-
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Mert, you're just trying to prod them without ticking them off? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. I mean, a nice sweet meal, right?
It is a dance.
Yeah.
So, will you be available next week to instruct us in how to-
This piece and that piece.
To, say, subject to the approval of the edits or whatever?
Certainly.
Okay. Thank you.
So, if, don't get something back from DSL by next Wednesday. I suppose I could go ahead and proceed and take a regular basis. You know what the issues are. We talked about them. This is few tweaks we have to fix. We could have those discussed. So, it's clear, as long as these are resolved and we get DSL's approval-
That's how it can do.
And then we recommend, you know, so we could keep it going.
Right. So, in that circumstance, what would need to happen is we'd have to add a condition. Well, for one, this is a recommendation, right? So, as a function of the recommendation, the planning commission's recommendation would need to contain a condition that says, "We would recommend approval conditioned on the applicant acquiring the DSL concurrence for the final LWI."
Right.
At that point in time, then that recommendation can still move forward, conditioned, of course, on the applicant producing that LWI before final adoption.
Yeah.
Particularly, it sounds like these changes are so small and everything, it's known exactly what needs to happen. It's just a matter of getting it through the process.
The VRA, Christine.
Right. And there's a number of other elements going along with this as well. In addition to the local wetland inventory, you also have the comp plan map application. You have the zone map creation. We have a small text amendment that basically clarifies that you don't have to do a wetland delineation to develop your property if the wetland's on the property next door, rather than your property. Maybe you want to specify, I mean, did I cover it adequately? I mean, it's just a one-line sentence that gets changed in the text. But we figured since we're already doing a text amendment to the code with the adoption of the map, we could roll this one-liner in at the same time and those pieces. So, the map that you see in that was just up that wetland map, that's actually a text amendment. And then along with that text amendment, adding that map is the other element they
It's in, it's in the- It's in the application requirements. So, it essentially adds a phrase in an existing sentence that says that if the buffer is on your property but not the wetland, then you do not have to get a delineation, which requires somebody to be able to get on the property because it's not your property. So, you don't have control over it.
Eliminate something that's just-
Very small. Yeah. Very small.
But to the owner of the property, it's a big deal if they have to hire a-
You have somebody next door that doesn't want any development, think, "Well, heck well, I'm not going to let you on." You have somebody next door that doesn't want any development, think, "Well, heck, well, I'm not going to let you on." So I'll just, uh, you know, stall you.
Yeah.
So uh, that's, that's all, just to, so it's the map, it's a replacement, a placeholder map with the map we had up and that one additional phrase thrown in, in.
Okay.
Anything else I'm missing? Of annexation.
I think that maybe for the packet that you get, we, we need to have some of these things up center.
Done and done.
The packet has to go out today.
Right. I mean, we have all that material, it's just more of a, how you order the pieces. But uh, should have the uh, code amendments very clear in the exhibit. And um, I think really a lot of this material that goes on and on, that can be at the end for all you folks who want to read the stuff, but we need to have all the punchlines ready. Yeah, we, we need to have punchlines up at the beginning, so that it's really clear. Also clear to the public anybody who shows up.
Yeah.
He's way through all this technical material. I mean, you get your eyes crossed, you don't know what you're.
But I think, yeah, we started out with the ordinance. And then with the ordinance, identify the text amendment. Boom, the text amendment's going to be the section of code, the one phrase, plus the, the L W I map.
Mm-hmm.
So those are the, that's the text amendment. And then you have your um, zoning map amendment, which is going to be the map that you see here with the acreages and the zone, neighborhood. With this, it's basically the purple one, you know.
We have two horses.
Right, yeah.
One is for uh, annexation.
But there's no reason we can't put this information just up front.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I, I, I agree with you on that.
That way, it's just kind of, this is what's being done.
Don't have to.
And then you also have the underlying comp plan map, which isn't changing. That's already there. So you have your regulating map, right? Regulating map.
Yeah, that's in the code, that's in the code.
So that's already in the comp plan, so we don't have to change that. That's already there.
No.
So it's really just the zone map, the, the city limit map, um, and the L W I, and in the code. Those are the four elements that, all of this.
And the cherry stem, um, like, is that have to be handled separately?
No, it's in with the annexation.
Okay.
We need the cherry stem to satisfy the annexation requirements, which uh, which requires adjacency.
Right.
So.
I just didn't know if it had to be handled separately.
No, it's handled at the same time that we adjust the city limit, and that's what creates our adjacency.
Okay.
And I think we already have a letter from Washington County concurring that that's uh, that they're in favor and will approve it.
Yeah. Well, should that letter be included in the packet?
It is, it's in there.
Okay.
One of the exhibits.
We'll do a job doing like a index, larger thing.
Yeah, I think what we'll do on the next agenda is we'll call out all the exhibits and just save them as their own PDF. That way, you can just click and go straight to that PDF or that exhibit instead of having to scroll through a thousand pages trying to find the one little.
Yeah.
Needle in a haystack. Right? Any other questions, concerns, or things that we need to discuss or work on?
So we'll get a new packet today?
Uh, it'll be hitting the mail uh, this afternoon. I mean, we try to aim for at least seven days in advance, but the requirement is twenty-four hours in advance. But um, we do try to shoot for getting it out the week before and definitely before the weekend, so everyone has a chance to review it.
Yeah.
But everything that we're going to send out is also in your packet that you had for this meeting. So it's just a regurgitation of everything that you have for this meeting, what we'll be presenting next.
So you can just bring me copies of what's new?
Right, right. I mean, you have, you have the copies, the printout, hard copy of everything that's already.
I have a hard, I have a hard copy, but just bring me what's new and I'm cool.
Okay, yeah, it won't be much new stuff, I don't believe.
Okay.
New items be flagged in some way? You know, like, when you do a PDF, you can.
Your only new item. Here's what I, here's what I'm thinking anyway. Getting this out on the fly here, but I think all you need to do is add an executive summary memo on top of everything. Here's what you have, and you just list that stuff out. But then primarily, then you have attached the um, L W I map. And we just articulate what these little. Are, we can get some, a little help from Merth. Um, and then for. Annexation, just have these maps uh, at the beginning. And just, you know, introduce all the attachments and all the stuff you've already done. And everybody's got this Reader's Digest thing right in front. It's got the main pieces, what we're doing. And I, but I'm, I'm thinking it's a, your memo's a page.
Yeah, right.
And then it's just some of these other attachments and, and then, and then the other stuff you've assembled, you can pretty much leave it as it is.
Yeah.
No.
Did I read in here somewhere that, the actual development? Will hinge on the ability to create the, the connector streets? Um, that they, when they, this is annexed and then when, as development begins, then the actual backbone of the, of the transportation system plan has to begin. Is that correct?
Well, no, uh, well, for this portion, yes.
Mm-hmm.
So, when they go to develop this section, they'll need to develop a street network that complies with our. And so with that development of street network, and you'll see, I don't know if I brought it in, um, but. Do you have the overlay one or not?
Is it on the map in red?
No, I don't think it is.
Not really.
But um, I'll show you a map that we have afterwards. It kind of shows where those street networks kind of get built in. The only streets that are, you're going to see on our transportation system plan are like the main streets. So inside the main streets are going to be a series of local streets, right?
Right.
So um, when we overlay a, a graph or a plot or something to that effect on this map, what you're going to see is our P S P main streets and main intersections identified. And then you're going to see uh, there, uh, street network overlaid on top of that with streets in between our streets and blocks, streets and blocks and, and neighborhoods and everything else. And that will be part of the development plan.
Right.
Uh, that will follow this.
Right.
So, part of this is going to be annexation, zoning, and an annexation agreement, which basically kind of sets the framework for coming up with a development plan. And then in the development plan, we'll call out how those streets and everything need to be kind of identified and, and be built to what standard and what kind of uh, financing and all the elements that are reimbursable and whatnot. We have Max, we've had Max working on some mapping this week because I was meeting with uh, some other interested parties earlier this week on kind of giving me an overlay of what it looks like when their neighborhoods are built in to our street network. And so, I mean, our streets are really only going to show up about every six hundred to twelve hundred linear feet.
Sure.
Um, the metro regional functional plan calls for uh, like your neighborhood collectors every five hundred and thirty to six hundred linear feet and a collector's street every uh, every twelve hundred linear feet, right? So what you see in our comp plan map is the main street, but inside these are additional streets.
So.
If you give me just one second, will you grab that?
This is the piece of property that is, I think the.
Um.
We're here.
The Autocad.
But this is, this annex, these annexations are all west of one fiftieth and will not be um, involved in the contested parts of the, of Fisher Road. That's, that's all east of one fiftieth.
Yeah, that doesn't, see, the Fisher Road thing doesn't get triggered until those properties try to develop, you know?
Yeah.
Like the, the whole reason for that lower road is to support the development of those areas, you know?
Yeah.
So if they don't develop, that road doesn't happen for a long time.
Yep.
So, like, right now, everything from one hundred and fiftieth west all drains toward. It all, it all drains toward the, here, we have a very large map here. Probably not going to be used. Not going to be, it's not going to be very good. So we can pass it on here. This is an older version, but you can kind of think about where. We have this comp plan map.
Uh-huh.
And then the comp plan map, it shows your backbone, your backbone street network. But on the map that you have to view, you see how the street, how that street network picture is in there, right? So you're going to have our streets, which are going to be this one, this one, this one, as well as Alton. And this is older, so this goes like this.
Okay.
And Alton comes to here and goes to here, so it comes down here and then that way, right?
So, okay, and that goes up. So, I think this is the street that um, divides the red from the yellow on, on this one, the mustard from the.
The mustard colored?
Yeah. Looks like this is the one right here. Um. Matt, could you give me a hard copy of the wetland?
The L W I one?
Um, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there's an idea of what their overlay looks like when you put it into Autocad and you can see how their road.
Okay, so they're, um, they're.
Can I get a hard copy of what you're passing around?
Yeah, we'll make sure you guys get a copy this morning.
Yeah, um, so it looks like they're, they're um.
We'll also give you a phase map, so you have an idea of how it will unroll development-wise. Like, this is just the first of many steps. So the first step is to annex everything and bring it in. The next step is development, right? So this will all come back before the Planning Commission when we reach the development stage. And at that point in time, you'll be able to look at the plat, the subdivision, and go through and condition those things. Um, one of the things that we'll try to roll in is grading work, right? So they're going to need to go out, do some grading, they're going to need to put in the infrastructure, all those, the elements to be um, functioning before they can actually start doing all their planning work, right? So, part of this annexation is, we're going to try to figure out how we can maybe get them a grading permit to start working in the uh, spring. They have to be within city limits before we can authorize the work. So, investing this.
All right, um.
Before we can authorize working this.
Sort of picky, aren't you? I can get my head around, um, and that's why I asked for the wetland map. Um, does the wetland map have the eroded areas? Are they cons, can, are they on that map, um?
To identify the areas where we've seen erosion?
Yeah.
No, it doesn't.
Oh, okay.
What we do, what we have is, we have buffer areas.
Uh-huh.
And we, we know where the drainages are.
Right, yeah.
So in our comp plan, we have a map that shows the buffer areas.
Okay.
And we know that those erosion pieces are typically along those drains.
Okay, yeah, because I'm, um, um.
That shows the L W I.
No, I'm looking for the more complicated one, actually.
The one from the report?
The northwest buffer, the buffer, or it shows all the drainages and natural resources and buffers.
Yeah. Because um, what I'm concerned, what I'm concerned about is that if we start fixing erosion, um, which we should, maybe, I don't know, um, that's going to affect the amount getting to the, um, getting into our wetlands that um, that our wetlands now have formed themselves around that erosion and the amount of water coming down. Um, and that water's going to keep coming down. So, do we authorize putting in um, putting the water underground?
Like high-flow bypass or something like that?
Yeah.
Yes, I think that is a component that we look at as stormwater management.
Uh-huh.
So you have a certain amount of retention, right?
Right.
And then whatever cannot be captured in the retention.
Right.
Needs to somehow go through like a high-flow bypass to the Twelton River, which has the capacity to handle it, right?
Okay.
Our little drainages can only handle so much before the erosion starts hitting, right?
Right, yeah.
So part of the stormwater plan that we're trying to build in with this continuing flow is a system of regional stormwater with high-flow bypass. So high-flow bypass will essentially have a discharge that will discharge to the Twelton River, right? So it'll be treated and then discharged to the Twelton River.
Okay.
Essentially, if the water, if there's enough water going down the stream, you'll have a pipe that will take the extra amount and divert it so that you don't have all the flow going through the channel and eroding it. You would take, you essentially pull some of it off, put it in a pipe and just take.
Well, then it's, it won't, it won't be treated at that point unless.
It will, it'll still go through the treatment facility, right?
Okay, all right.
But once the treatment facility, or the retention facility starts getting over.
Yeah.
What it can handle, it goes off. So it's already been treated by the time it gets to retention. There's treatment and then there's retention.
Okay, so the bypass comes.
At the retention.
At retention, okay, got it.
So once it gets to retention, and if the flows are too high, it would then hit a high-flow bypass and go to the river.
So does that change the character of the water in the Twelton River?
No, because it's already been treated, right? So it's been treated, runoff water, it'll just go back into the Twelton River where it was going to go anyway, but it's already been through a bioswelle or.
Like, it might be cleaner because if you have a torrent going down the creek, it's going to be eroding more and then putting more sediment.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Tridity to the water and everything, so this would reduce the tridity and put the water straight into the channel instead of uh, going and eroding the little cree, drainages that we have.
Which is an issue right now.
Which is an issue right now, yeah, exactly. Because we have too much flow going down the little drainages that are there. And the drainages aren't, the soils aren't, they've been routed down through areas that weren't original drainage anyways. And so, when it goes through there, it's going to try to seek bedrock. And it's going to go down and erode until it hits bedrock. And that's what we've seen in like the River Terrace area and some of those other areas where it's been channelized, right?
Our field trip on the Meyer property was it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The Meyer property, and, and that's the original.
Is it eroded that?
Yeah, yeah, and it's coming back, it's going up every year.
Oh, I didn't see that.
So, until you can, you know, reroute some of the flow coming through there, and the only way you're going to reroute the flow going through there is through some sort of development activity and get your high-flow bypass, right? Um, you have to get your filtration, your uh, retain, retention, and then you have your high-flow bypass. Um, but the only way we can do that is if we have development activity that.
Sure, Clean Water Services, which will manage.
Or us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other thing Clean Water Services is looking at is if they can find some opportunities for controlling some of the stormwater runoff up on Bull Mountain.
Mm-hmm.
Because they realize that what they were requiring back in the day wasn't enough.
Yeah.
And so they'll look, they are looking for opportunities to retrofit some facilities to try to reduce the impacts on. That's what they'll be, but they're.
They can do something at each and road.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, and can some of that be.
Oh, and can some of that be channeled to the Twelton, uh, Natural Wildlife Refuge?
That's on the other river, so we can't really channel it that way. Um, so Wildlife Refuge is probably, it's a long ways away from where we're at, to be honest. You'd have to cross the Twelton River and go down Roy Rogers, uh, before you get to the, it's almost to Shoal Sherwood Road.
Yeah.
It's, and then it's on the left-hand side. But there's a whole area between us and the Wildlife Refuge. There's the Heritage Pine area, there's the Metro-
Isn't this Little Heath right here in?
That's actually owned by Metro.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's actually not the Twelton Wildlife Refuge, it's actually on the other side of that, part of that.
Okay, so it's only on the opposite side?
Yeah.
I thought it also is a bit-
That's the Beef Bend, uh, Preser, I mean, I don't know, Beef Bend property that Metro just purchased.
Mm-hmm.
It was a farm, that's an old farm.
Okay.
And, uh, Metro just purchased that, I call it the thumb, the Metro thumb.
Yeah.
But, um, I forget what they call that area, but-
But, and what are they planning to do with it, I mean?
They haven't, they explained what they, what their intentions are along with it. So, right now, it's just, so, hanging on to it.
Ah.
Yeah, right now, it's just bare earth.
Yeah.
Or, it's natural state.
Oh, okay.
But Metro also owns the other property on the other side of the river from that, too. And, uh, and then there's a private property owner over there, I think it's, uh, Stibol Family or something owns a chunk. And then, uh, there's, uh, Heritage Pines, which is owned by Metro as well. In the Twelton Wildlife Refuge is south of that.
I was hoping that the Metro land would be added to the Wildlife Refuge.
I'm sure, well, I mean, they're trying to set aside a natural corridor, I think, and, um, you know, it'll be nice, it's adjacent to us, whatever they do with that area, um, it'll be a nice feature for our community in the future, I believe. Um, just depending on whatever they choose to do with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
They used to have, they used to have, like, uh, a regional trail programmed along that pathway. I don't, I think they asked to remove that, because they're not sure where that trail's gonna be, um, or how that's gonna go. So, right now, we don't, it's all, all up in the air, we don't know what's happening with that piece.
Um, um, back to the annexation, there's a Cultural Resources property that we are removing that, um, can you tell me a little bit about it and the whole thinking behind that?
The Cultural Resources, a house that's over on the Hossawiki property, uh, on the far side. The old farmhouse that sits there, uh, is about, I think, the reason it's identified is it's, uh, a hundred years old, or it, it, it's at mark, the problem is, it's not structurally sound.
Okay.
And, uh, it's in really rough shape. So, we have received, like, a report on the building along with photos and evidence suggesting that it's not, uh-
Eligible for that historical building?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it could technically be there, but you're talking about a lot of funds to try to, uh, re- use and stop building.
Uh-huh, okay.
And, uh, it, it's, it's in a state right now where it's probably better off just-
Where, where, whereabouts is it, I just wanna drive by.
It's right over on the far side, and it's-
Here, we have buildings marked on this one.
Yeah, it's gonna be this one right here.
That one right there, okay.
Yeah.
Because it was, you know, one of the, one of the things that in community development that I would like to see, um, is the, some, some idea of what was there before.
Yeah.
You know, um, but if it's, um, I don't know if we can work that into a park somewhere or something, but-
I, I think in our parks, we didn't program, you know, some archi, some arts and culture aspects.
Uh-huh.
I think that could be programmed into, um, the park areas. And even with our park SDC, we may be able to, uh, fund some arts and cultural activities in the future.
Uh-huh.
Uh, when we spoke with the tribes, that was, uh, one of their requests, is that, you know, or one of their recommendations, was that, you know, if you set aside, like, one percent of your park's SDCs for, uh, like, arts and cultural, um, conditions here and there, then that can actually go a long way. And so, uh, when I spoke with the 53J, uh, this is probably about a year ago or so-
Yeah.
About how to implement that into our plan, what we did is, we talked about just, uh, putting it into the parks component of, of our master plan. So, and tried to capture that in kind of like what our parks requirements are.
Would that include, um, signage, talking about the tribe that was there and what kinds of activities they did in that particular spot?
Yeah, we talked about kiosks and, like, uh, little information sheets, you know? So, if you, like, we have a pretty elaborate, uh, trail network planned throughout the Kingston Terrace area.
Yeah.
Along that, you would have informational kiosks, artworks strategically placed at certain locations, um, all those kind of things kind of programmed in and through that area.
Um, is there any way we can connect, um, this, we haven't annexed that, so I guess I answered my own question. This, would this, in terms of a bicycle path or pedestrian path, um, some way to get from here to here without, um, killing yourself?
Yeah, right now, um-
Besides Beef Bend, huh?
Yeah, right now, no, because we haven't annexed those areas in the middle.
Yeah.
But it is in the transportation system plan to have that.
Right, yeah.
But it, it'll happen over time.
Uh-huh.
Like, the, the plan is, is over, over the course of time-
Uh-huh.
As these parcels develop, between the far side and the near side, you would also have, uh, multi-purpose trail systems-
Right, yeah.
Uh, connections for bikes and pedestrians and, and pathways, trails, roads, infrastructure, sanitary water, uh, power, gas, cable, everything kind of interlaces and gets built as development occurs.
Right, okay.
Um, so it might take, it might take time-
I'll be gone.
For those pieces to come together.
Mm-hmm.
But it might happen quicker than we anticipate to.
Mm-hmm.
Um, my anticipation is that this is the first piece on the, on the far side. This is what we always kind of anticipated, is that the, the west side was gonna go first and then it would start flowing toward the city-
Uh-huh, okay.
The current city limits, and as those connections are made, so too are the alternative trail and pedestrian access.
I was just hoping we could put a goat path in.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it would be nice to kinda get there, I think we will get there eventually, it's just, uh, a matter of when it goes.
Right.
Could be twenty years from now.
Yeah.
Um, who's got a herd of goats? Oh, that'll train people to go up Beef Bend then, you know, we'll just train them to go there.
Well, I mean, as someone who has been on bike rides on Beef Bend, it's not a fun ride, so-
No, it is not, yeah.
And walking along Beef Bend to Roy Rogers, which I have done when I was, you know, training for Portland to Coast, it's scary.
Yeah, there's not a lot of shoulder room.
Yeah, and there's a few times when you just sort of jump into the ditch.
Yeah, or like the mirror bumps your handlebar for your elbow.
Beef Bend, east of, east of One Thirty First used to be exactly the same way, and somebody's, uh, uh, mirror clipped me as I was walking along and threw me into the ditch, so you really need to be careful.
I mean, the one good thing is, as development goes in, that corridor will be improved along Beef Bend, and it'll be improved to meet those standards that will, uh, that are built into our master plan and into our TSB. And so, that will provide that, that multi-use pathway, uh, separated from the main flow.
So, um, but there's no way we can do that before the, the development?
Unless Washington County wants to go on.
Hey!
I mean, it's a, yeah.
Anyone have guns in Washington County?
Take it short and easy, uh, I, I think you're talking about a fifty to sixty million dollar project just to go from a hundred and thirty seven thousand Roy Rogers.
But isn't there a structure built?
It's a half tree improvement for that.
Yeah. Maybe Tiger, maybe Tiger will go faster.
Yeah.
So.
I think they're behind us a couple of years.
Oh, okay.
But they're working, they're working hard, I imagine that they're, they're pushing forward as well, but they are probably a couple of years behind us on there.
Okay.
But when Tiger does bring in their end-
Yeah.
Uh, they'll improve their half of Beef Bend as well.
Feels like Tiger just annexed most of their side of Beef Bend.
To their city limits, yes. From like A Hundred and Fiftieth.
But their city limits are very limited, um, they only go out to A Hundred and Seventeenth along, uh, Beef Bend Road, and then, uh, where they've, it's, they have very little annex beyond that point.
Do you have any other wetland-related questions? I realize Murth is still on.
Okay, sorry.
I, I, no, I mean, if you have any, but if you don't have any, then we could probably let Murth, uh, take off.
So, um, just real quickly, Murth, um, the plan is to basically fill in the agricultural ponds? Is that what I got from reading it? Yeah, okay, good.
I think, there's only one agricultural pond that I know of, and that's the one that's, uh, southeast of Alstom Garden.
Okay, got it, mm-hmm.
And I think they delineated that out.
All right.
Yeah, that's, that's the big agricultural pond, there's a smaller one to the south attached to Wetland A, but I don't think DSL took jurisdiction over either pond, so it's just the wetland.
Okay, I see it, yeah.
Yeah, but just one caveat, be very careful publishing the map that only shows the locally significant wetlands, because people are gonna look at that and not realize there's other wetlands that are still regulated by Oregon Department of State Lands and Clean Water Services. And so, they're, when you have a map that doesn't show all the wetlands, you just raise that possibility that someone's gonna go fill them without a permit. So, just be very careful about making sure that you have a local wetland inventory map that shows everything and not just the locally significant ones.
Okay, yeah.
So, we, can we just publish the map with maybe a different color code for those that are the significant wetlands versus the, the rest of them?
Yeah, there's a lot of ways to do it, all the freedom to keep, and like, all that.
So, we might, so, Murth, if I'm understanding, we might have two maps. We have one that would be for regulating purposes, it's in the code, it just shows the significant ones. But then elsewhere, we would have information showing where all the wetlands are.
Exactly, yeah. And just say, you know, there are other wetlands subject to DSL and Clean Water Services jurisdiction.
Okay, so above the, um, the wetland that is, um, the Long Wetland, and in the piece of property that is above that, there is a wetland PSA, I think, um, and that looks like a fairly large wetland, especially compared to the two little guys on the other side of Elsner Road. Um, can you tell us what the plan is there with, uh, tax map? I should've borne the glasses, um, tax lot two oh three, it looks like, um, do you, do you see where I'm talking about?
Yes.
Okay, um, is that a significant wetland? Is it not deep? Um, it looks like it covers quite a bit of area, um-
That was a tricky one to evaluate. It, uh, is proposed for development, uh, as residential housing, I think, Stacy Connor or Maureen can gently correct me if I'm wrong. There, it, it came awfully close, because it's in the floodplain, it's within a certain distance from the Twelton River. Um, so, yeah, I, I had to push very carefully to, to, uh, uh, evaluate it, and it did not come as, up as a locally significant well, and I've had no pushback from DSL on my determination there, so that was a big sigh of relief for me.
So, that goes on the other, uh, other wetland page.
Yeah, non-locally significant wetlands is kind of a mouthful, so.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Plain old wetlands that aren't locally significant. Still regulated, not by the city, but by DSL and Clean Water Services.
So, what makes the little guys significant? What, what determines significance?
Um, because they were on a tributary that's directly correct, connected to the Twelton River and the-
Ah.
The big one is on the Twelton River in the floodplain, but it just-
Right, yeah, that guy.
So, if you have-
But doesn't it look a little-
We, we look at four functions, we look at wildlife habitat, fish habitat, water quality, uh, function, and then hydrologic control function, which is floodplain attenuation. And there was only one well that scored high for wildlife habitat, but because these other two small ones along the stream scored medium for water quality control, and they're close enough to the Twelton River, which is a water quality limited stream on a whole bunch of different factors, then there's a chance that those wellings could possibly improve the water quality of the Twelton River, even though it's so small, um, compared to the volume of the river. But anyway, that's how those two small ones became locally, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome, anything else?
Um, how about, okay, I gotta ask about the wetlands up near, um, up near Beef Bend at the eastern, close to the eastern boundary of our study area, I think, yes, still in the study area.
Were you talking about KTE?
Yes.
Uh, yeah. Um, that one is not significant, it looks like it holds, like, it's gonna, almost a retention wetland before we head down that, um, that one drainage. So, it's an uphill, uphill from the river.
That's a really interesting well, and the, the little tiny wetland KTF is on the east side of the tributary, and so, it's just a little tiny portion of the western wetland KTE that is attached to that tributary. So, the amount of-
Okay.
Influence that that well could improve the river is not great. And it only extends offsite for a little bit, it's, we had to estimate all our offsite acreages to do, to run the assessment method correctly. And what's really interesting about that well is that it's been planted to an Oregon ash forest, and then they're all in linear rows, and it looks like they go out and they chop saplings off, and maybe they're, they were planting them somewhere for the nursery operation, but I've never seen anybody do that. So, it's just a high groundwater table there, uh, not really fed by up slope runoff, um-
Okay, okay, all right.
Probably more than you wanted to know.
No, no, it isn't, I like, I like knowing those things, okay, thank you. What are you guys?
Regulation. Regulate, regulatory hurdles.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Well, I think if we have the two maps, one which has the significant, regionally significant, and then here's the other map that shows the ones that have not been designated as significant, I think that makes it fairly clear for the public.
The one thing we could do when we're doing our map revisions is to asterix the ones that are locally significant on this map that Pacific Community Design is revising for us. And that way, that would be in the, uh, local well and inventory report as well. So, that might be a clean way to, to do it, is that we could just either make them a different color or put an asterix on all the ones that are locally significant. And there are only four out of the fourteen, so that's really good.
Yeah, okay.
That's something we should consider.
Thank you so much, though, for your work.
My pleasure, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna ask another one. Wetland SS eight, which is right on the river?
Yes.
Um, is that, it's not, oh, that is considered, okay, that is significant, got it, okay, thank you.
It is.
thank you.
It is.
Page, Marie?
I don't, I...
I mean, for our purposes, though, for what we adopt as a function of our code, we have to adopt L W I, that's what we put in...
Page forty, did she say? Hmm? Oh, this data sheet.
Oh, I printed that out.
Oh, you printed that one out, okay.
Because I was looking at what the existing uses were, and I kinda wanted that in my brain. What's happening with these properties, how have they changed? I think it's important that when we present this, that we emphasize the fact that we are being sensitive to the natural areas and that the developments will, um, have to honor that sensitivity, because that seems to be a public sticking point, and in some ways I think it's been a misconception that we are ignoring, um, the natural area inventories, whether it's wetlands or drainage or wildlife.
Yeah.
And erosion, I mean, all of those things. And so it's kinda like this is the first, in quotes, uh, model template that we can move forward with.
Yeah, part of my conversation the other day with our petitioner group was that, uh, you know, the flexibility in the T S P provides an option to avoid the banks in prop, the banks in nature or conservation, but it's just through certain variances in the intersection locations and how you could reroute the road, but the problem is, is that then you get into, is it better for the ecosystem, is it better for the wetlands, is it better, is it a, a better plan for the people that live there, and, you know, what it, in my opinion and what the consultant's opinion was, is that it really wasn't any better, right, and so we just felt sticking with the roadway was the better option, because otherwise you're diving into the wooded area that surrounds the, uh, the ecological system there, but it, it does allow you to technically miss the banks.
Right.
But, you know, and we drew it up on a map.
Right, and last night I was at K C C A and this lady sort of accosted me about, about, uh, uh, how many cars, if we extended Fisher Road, how many cars, and I said, actual cars or are we talking miles?
How many cars are, if you don't extend Fisher, how many cars, how many of those cars are gonna be coming through K C C A?
Right, right.
Which, and they go through my, my street now.
Her thing was it was gonna be eighty-five thousand cars, and I said, where did you get that number?
Yeah, that's their fear tactic.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We, we don't generate that many, what, what happens is the entire area at full buildout, we're gonna go into off topic here, but the entire area at full buildout is projected to generate about, uh, thirty-four hundred units, each unit produces anywhere from nine to ten average daily trips, so you have a number that's around thirty-two thousand to thirty-four thousand average daily trips that is generated by the Kingston Terrace area. King City currently generates about twenty-four thousand average daily trips, twenty-four to twenty-six thousand average daily trips. Expansion area will generate about thirty-four to thirty-six thousand.
On top of the twenty-four?
Yeah, so total, in total, King City as a whole will generate around sixty to seventy thousand average. Now, if Alstom two thousand one and two thousand three come into play and you double and triple the number of units per lot, that number could potentially double or triple, and, you know, we can look at our crystal ball to project that, but, I mean, bottom line is that you're gonna need a balanced street network to handle those flows, and that's what we have in the transportation system plan.
And what we're hoping for is that people won't need to dr, have, drive over to ninety-nine, that they can go up Roy Rogers and be employed in our town center, they can be employed in Progress Ridge, our kids can go to school, never mind, a bit mal, but, yeah, um, we hope that not everybody has to get to ninety-nine.
Right, the more legs you have to the system, cars are gonna be on each, are gonna be dispersed over, and if the network is, be ready. But, I mean, what happens is if you funnel everyone to Beef Bend, people are gonna look for alternatives to Beef Bend, that's when you're gonna encourage cut through traffic.
And we already got cut through traffic, I, I live on royalty and they go zipping up in front of my house every morning and every evening, 'cause my portion of royalty doesn't have speed bumps.
Right, right, I mean, and that's just it, like, if you wanna discourage cut through, provide decent alternatives, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, that's what we try to do, find other alternatives to avoid the cut through traffic. You're gonna get cut through traffic in today's day and age anyways, 'cause everyone's walking around with a GPS in their...
Take it.
...tip of their finger.
Go after Google.
Sue Google.
Right.
Yeah, Google needs a on bigger roads, um, option.
Any other questions for Murth, wetland wise?
Don't think I have any further questions, I just wanted to make the comment about the emphasis on, on our sensitivity to...
Yeah.
To...
I think, you know, our plan really builds in a lot of sensitivity, like the master plan, regulating plan, it really builds in a lot of sensitivity to those natural areas, and when you look at the regulating plan that Max had handed out, you can see that those areas are left off of, you know, those sensitive areas are left out of the plan, you know, that's all the gray areas in here.
Uh-huh.
And so what you see highlighted here, the thin color, is only about three hundred and ten acres, and the total area is about five hundred and twenty acres.
Yeah.
So you've got another two hundred and ten acres of land that's in those gray areas that's technically buffered or designated as natural, not even in our calculation.
But unfortunately, that message is not getting out.
I know.
And that's my concern, is, is how do we get that message, you know, make that message reconsidered?
Yeah, because no one, no one's interested in the facts, they're interested in believing what they believe, to, to believe in what they believe and creating drama over it.
You know, basically, you're saying only three fifths of the, of the area is going to be developed and two fifths of it will be...
Nature preserve areas.
Will be...
Natural areas.
It will be natural areas that will stay undeveloped, you know, and it's kinda like, we need that as a headline.
Yeah, should be.
Yeah.
We've been, we've been saying it since the very beginning, but it's not the message they wanna carry forward, right? And it's the message we want them to carry forward and understand is that we're trying to be stewards of the environment and we're trying to do all the right things, but...
If you do not want to hear the facts, you don't hear them.
Funny how that works. Fortunately, unfortunately.
Thank you, guys, for the presentation.
All right, any questions on annexation?
Should I go now?
Yeah, you're good, Marie, thanks, Murth, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, talk to you later.
I think we're good then, um, that can pretty much wrap up our, our work session on this particular item. I don't think we've got anything else going on, the only other thing would be how to run the meeting, you know?
Okay.
Uh, Wednesday, Annie will be back for that meeting as well.
Okay.
And we'll have a script, it'll be just a regular public meeting, uh, we have to go through the local well and inventory component first, and I know the numbers are backwards, so we just have to remember that I need a recommendation for approval prior to a recommendation for approval with the annexation, we'll also need to remember that, uh, L W I, initial concurrent that we'll need to condition, and if we can't approve without condition, uh, so we can recommend approval conditioned upon the receipt of a concurrence from Department of State.
Right.
Uh...
So it might also remind the public that the only part is gonna be, still gonna be the same, but it's gonna be a little bit more restricted, especially for Zoom.
Uh, yeah, so we had some Zoom bombers.
Oh.
Um, that came in with some anti-Semitic and racial comments at our last city council meeting, so we've now developed this system to kinda screen those folks a little bit more online, and they'll need to, we will not accept public testimony from anyone we don't recognize or anyone that's outside of our area.
Oh, okay.
Right, so unfortunately, they can submit their testimony, but we're not gonna have them bomb us and, uh, and or a bunch of people, needless, uh, sorry, sorry about that, but, uh...
And I hope that I can be there in attendance next week.
Yeah.
And if anyone has any questions over the course of the next week, we're here, uh, myself, Keith, Max, Ronnie, uh, reach out to us by any means, then we'll try to get you answers.
Okay, I appreciate that. Is there anything else?
No, it'll just be a public hearing next round. Gretchen, are you gonna be around this afternoon?
Yes, oh, wait a minute, wait a minute.
I have copies of these masks and everything.
Can you bring it tomorrow?
I, I could also, you know, just like leave it at your doorstep and an envelope if you'd like.
Yeah, that's fine, I have a doctor's appointment this afternoon.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay, I get to go see my orthopedist to put my new knee in, it's my post op.
Okay, shall we adjourn the meeting?
Yes.
Somebody wanna, somebody make a motion?
I, motion we, um, I move, we adjourn the meeting.
Okay, everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned eleven sixteen A M.
Oh, oh, Matt, can I get...